The city council meeting, Cape Canaveral, Florida. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Randalls, would you be so honored tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for being here. We call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Here.
Mayor Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Councilmember Randalls.
Present.
Councilmember Raymond.
Here.
Okay, our first item is oath of office, I guess. Christine, you.
I pledge my right hand, I, Robert E. Hill, solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and of the State of Florida and the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, and that I am entitled to hold office in the City of Cape Canaveral, Florida, and that I will faithfully assume and perform all the duties for which I have been commissioned and entrusted of the office of Mayor and of the City Council of the District of Chicago. So, congratulations.
I'd like to just take a minute and thank the citizens of Cape Canaveral and my council for support, and I look forward to a good three years of prosperous and keeping our city moving forward, and I hope we all work together and see that happen. And thanks again. Okay, our first item on the agenda is public participation. Do we have anybody that submitted cards?
Selection of Mayor Pro Tem.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's all right. I'm sorry. Mayor Pro Tem selection. We need to have somebody to fill in for the Mayor Pro Tem slot. Mr. Brown has been our commissioned Mayor Pro Tem for the past year. If there's anybody wishes to nominate somebody different or renominate Mr. Brown, it's possible.
I'll move to renominate Mike Brown for Mayor Pro Tem.
I will second that, Mayor. May I?
Okay. Mr. Brown, it's up to Mr. Brown if he accepts it, but it's can be done, but it's whatever the council so desires.
Thanks.
I think he's done a great job, but I'll move to support him, but if that's what we wish. Motion by Angela, seconded by Rocky, to nominate Mr. Brown for a second year or a second term of Pro Tem again. You accept?
That's unusual, I might add, Mayor. I don't believe we've ever had somebody do it two years in a row, so that's quite an honor.
Oh, I have. I have.
You have, two years in a row?
I have about seven years in a row sometimes.
Wow.
Yeah, but it's a needed position. And congratulations, Mike, if you take that. Call for the vote, please. We have a motion by Angela Raymond and a second by Mr. Randalls for Mr. Brown to be Mayor Pro Tem again.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Okay, four. Revoked.
Thank you.
Mayor Hoag.
Four.
Councilmember Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Randalls.
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Congratulations, Mike, and thanks for stepping up again.
Appreciate that.
Let me get my glasses on so I can see what we've got going on here. I missed that. Okay, now we're going to go to public participation. Did we get any cards? No speakers?
Pardon me?
You fell out a card up here?
I gave it to her, she took it.
Okay.
The deputy, she took it.
Okay, okay.
It's just my public participation paper.
All right, we have a paper. You can come up, just submit it. I didn't know either.
Pardon me?
You heard me. I'm here, we all know, because I didn't get a c-
State your name, please, for the record, for the computer or the take- don't know who you are.
John Benton.
Okay, so go ahead.
Okay, I'm here for the code reduction hearing that I've been requesting ever since my code, since the code enforcement fined me for living in a warehouse, and you guys won't give it to me. Last time I came here to talk about this, this officer back here jerked me out of the meeting over at the library and had the FBI out there talking to me that you guys called. How did that turn out for you guys? Not too good, did it? Let me tell you what happened here recently. October 18th, I was out at the courthouse, and I put, I went out there with some signs protesting to get my code reduction hearing. The officers came out there and told me that if I didn't cover up one of those words on Mr. Randall's signs, that he was going to put me in jail. Well, I stood my ground, and I said, "I'm not doing it." And they went in to get a warrant. Yeah, well, they came back with the wa- they didn't come back with a warrant. You know what they came back with? They came with back with Judge Crawford. We're standing out there discussing what you guys did. You let a, you let someone come in and testify against me after I testified that I did not live in that warehouse. Driver's license, electric bill, phone bill, homestead exemption, and all says I don't live there. You let a man get up and testify after me, and he threw me under the bus, and the lawyer got on and said I was a cookie that crumbled. You wouldn't let me get up and defend myself after that. I thought I was over in Israel somewhere. I felt like a Palestinian over there having my land taken away. That's my warehouse, and the renter in my unit next to me was a cop from Cocoa Beach. When you going to give it to me? When you going to give me my code reduction hearing? The only reason you didn't get elected is because Mr. Randalls didn't do anything about Mr. Mann coming in lying under oath. If he did something, that church would have not voted him in because he's a deacon in the church that came under and lied under oath, man. You thought I was homeless. The ju- the lawyer or your FBI agent, he also find out, he also found out that I'm also assault, I'm a victim of sexual assault at a Jew school in Orlando, and I came forward 25 years after the man got me to make sure he never did it again. And I sent that to him in emails. That's my statement. If I'm lying to him, he's going to put me in jail. Right now, I'm still standing here, aren't I? I want my code reduction hearing. You're going to see me out here with your signs here pretty soon because the judge has already signed off on it's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a seat, I'm leaving.
That's very fine. We can move also.
Anybody else? We'll close public participation. Presentation and interviews. We have an interview tonight for Culture and Leisure Services Board member Barbara McPeak. Come up to the podium, please, and our attorney will talk to you for a few minutes.
Sure. Good evening. The first question is just formality. Is all of the information in your application true and correct?
Yes.
Okay. So could you please explain to the council why you would like to serve on the Culture and Leisure Services Board?
Well, you know, put Cape Canaveral on the map. Only thing you ever hear is "the" Cape and Cocoa Beach. Even when I watch the weather on TV, it'll say Titusville, it says Cocoa Beach, nothing about Cape Canaveral. It's like, we're unknown. So I just want, you know, make people aware that we're here. I don't really want Cocoa Beach, for sure. A little too busy for me.
Okay, that's all the questions I have, Mayor.
Good.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What are your interests? Are you interested more in the art and literature or recreation?
Recreation.
Or special events?
Special events and recreation. I've been on, I was on, can't even think, Space Coast Pride for five years as a director, and we do a lot of events, so I like doing that. Like the Friday Fest up here. I like going, you know, to that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I know you know Ms. Peak.
Yeah, I sure would, Ms. Peak. Thank you for doing this, and your qualifications are good. In fact, I knew you when you were on the board down at Canaveral Sands, is that correct? Yes, mm-hmm. You're, you and the board keeps that place looking pretty good. That's kind of my neighbor down there on the way to the beach. Thank you. Oh, June, I think. Well, thanks for what you want to do, and do you have the time to get involved? I think I meet one night a month in the afternoon. Well, let me see, I work two hours a week. Wow. I think you have time. Two hours on Monday, 12:30 maybe to 2:30, that's it. We appreciate you and thank you for being a volunteer. I noticed that was your number one choice on the list. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Ms. McPeak, I just want to echo what Councilmember Randall said and say thank you so much for joining. It's always nice to see, as he said, you pick, you know, you rank your, the boards that you were willing to put on. A lot of people just put one or two, and you were willing to be anywhere you were needed, and it worked out till your number one lines up today, and I think you'd be an excellent asset to the community. So thank you very much.
Okay, I also think you're going to be an excellent, excellent asset to the community. You mentioned that you see the Cape and you have Cocoa Beach. Do you have any ideas how you might maybe make this brand a little better than it already is?
Well, I know it can't be Cocoa Village. I mean, I, you know, I'd like to even see more restaurants rather than just bar, 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 bar. You know, a few more restaurants, more functions, you know?
Okay.
Because that Manatee Park is perfect for having things.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
I don't have anything other than I would like to walk you aboard, and I know you've been around here for a while. Pleasure to have you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for stepping up.
You're welcome. Mayor, before she says that, may I ask another question? Space Coast Pride, you were the director. Tell us about that. Space Coast Pride is LGBTQ organization. Okay. And we put on functions and do fundraisers. Okay. There's a lot of homeless young people that their parents, you know, have thrown them out because they are gay, so we help them. Okay, thank you. Forgive my ignorance, but I didn't recognize the connection between that. Thank you. It's okay, it's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll be getting to your appointment just in a little bit, so if you want to stick around here. That's it. We have, that's the only board appointment we got, other than the ones that are on your consent agenda. We can move to the consent agenda. We have items one through five. Anybody wish to remove anything? Bearing nothing, we'll call for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Mayor, if there is no specific one of the items withdrawn, I would move for approval of one through five of the consent agenda items.
I second it.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Randalls and a second by Angela Raymond to accept the five items as presented. You call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Four.
Mayor Hoag.
Four.
Councilmember Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Randalls.
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Okay, we go into our public hearings. We have ordinance 10-2018, adopting the amendment for the annual general fund, special revenue funds and agency. We've had this last month on our agenda. If there's nothing to discuss on it or anything that you want to hear from our finance department, we'll look for a motion.
Mayor, we need to read in the heading at least.
The title. Would you like me to read the title?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Ordinance number 10-2018, an ordinance of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, adopting amendments to the annual general fund, special revenue funds, agency fund, capital project funds, enterprise funds, and enterprise capital fund budgets for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions and an effective date.
Thank you. Anybody have any discussion they want? The Leo's here for-
I would, Mayor, if I may, just a quick, brief subject. I see some people in the audience perhaps that I haven't seen before, so this is, and I'll address it just to the audience. This is the, going back to the end of our fiscal year, which is our accounting year, and that ended the first of October, ended last of September, the first of October. We prepare, the city staff prepares a budget for us starting in June and July the previous year, and we don't know what our income is going to be according to the taxes quite yet exactly, and we don't know what our expenses. We know what we did last year, and we plan the budget according like that, similar to your budget. Budget is best estimate a year in advance. And through the year, maybe we had an air conditioner breakdown that needed repair that we hadn't planned on. Maybe we had to dig up some sewer lines. Maybe we started a project and didn't get it finished, so it's not in this year's budget. So this adjustment that we make at the end of the year for each fund, and it's all spelled out, tells exactly if we didn't, all right, let me give you an example, if I may, since we don't have a whole lot on the agenda. I think it's kind of important, for instance, the ad valorem taxes. We don't know exactly what the taxes are going to be, and this year, the ad valorem taxes come in $89,806. That's about the third line down, I think, from the top. Screw me up to the top here. Okay. The revenue is ad valorem taxes, actually the fourth line down. So we got a little more, some properties were appraised at more than we anticipated or what, maybe a new home went online. So as a result of that, there was a little more ad valorem, that's our property taxes. So at the end of the year, we had, or during the year, when we got this, we had a little more money to work with. So on the bottom of the expenditures down there, we had some unexpected expenses, and then we had some that we didn't finish the project on. So this is simply balancing it out for the auditors when they come in to say, "Here is what happened. Here's a very large budget, it's about $12 million, and if you'll see above here in the, next to the last column where the double lines are, we was within $110,700, right there at the very bottom, we were within $110,726 of our estimates." And that's pretty good for the staff that prepared this, not knowing a year ahead in advance what emergencies is going to happen, what needed to be done, how much some items are going to cost. So this is our chance on that second vertical column, third vertical column going across this, what we have made the adjustments, similar as you would do in a budget perhaps yourself. So that's the purpose of this. It's all documented, it's put in the ledger, and the auditors will come in and review all this to make sure that it's done correctly. But that kind of explains it, because I see a couple of new people in the audience maybe say, "Whoa, they're, they're switching money around there." Well, this is after the fact, we're putting the beans in the bucket and putting for accounting for what exactly we spent the money for. So thank you for giving me a chance to explain that, and I hope it's of a level that at least you can feel comfortable that they're, they're changing money around. Well, we're recording exactly what we spent and exactly what came in, even though we didn't actually anticipate that. So it's a yearly event, same as you balance your checkbook when you buy something that you perhaps didn't expect to do. So with that, thank you, Mayor. If, if there isn't anything else, Mr. Chair, I would move to approve ordinance number 10-2018 at the second reading, and this is the second public hearing and reading that we've had this.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Randalls and a second by Ms. Raymond to approve ordinance 10-2018 as written, as presented.
Yeah.
Public discussion. We're going to go into that.
Before you close it out, we want to go into public. Anybody in the audience have any questions they want to ask on what we just presented to you? On the budget transfers and what Mr. Randalls explained? He did a very good explanation, by the way. No, nobody have anything? Okay, we'll close public discussion and bring it back to the council for a vote. We have a motion to approve. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Four.
Mayor Hoag.
Four.
Councilmember Morrison.
Four.
Councilmember Randalls.
For the motion to approve.
Councilmember Raymond.
Four.
Okay, that's the agenda. Mr. Blue, welcome aboard. Mrs. Peaks, welcome aboard. And who was the other one?
Mr. Felino.
Felino, was it? Yes, back there. Welcome aboard, sir. All right, council, we got some reports, I'm sure, but let's, that's, and if we want to repeat, just don't repeat.
We already approved one through five. We already approved you for this? Okay. All right, thank you, I'm ready. It's been a busy month. I thought the previous month was extremely busy, but this month has been too. I'd like to offer my congratulations to Mayor Hoag, and I'd like to quote from Senator Nelson, "A public office is a public trust." I feel that Mayor Hoag has exemplified this in everything that he does for our city. He is moving our city forward, and we're going to keep moving forward. Thank you very much. This past month, as I said, was very busy. We had a lot of things going in the city. I did go to Code Enforcement 101, and I wanted to thank the people that presented. I thought it was an excellent presentation, very professional, it was here in the city, and I learned a lot. And on the 26th, we had trunk or treat, and I think the most difficult job that I've done since I've been a council member was judging the costume. Who had the best costume during the Monster Mash? This was not easy. Everybody was so darn cute. I thought that everybody should get a prize, but that was it. The thing, the little girl that I really wanted to win was dressed as a peacock, and we should get her up here because she could be a mascot for the City of Cape Canaveral. She even had real peacock feathers on her back, but she disappeared, so she couldn't get the prize. I felt really bad about that. The next thing we had going, we volunteered, my husband and I both volunteered for the Space Coast Art Festival at Manatee Park, and I feel that that was a big, big success. So I was very happy about that. And I wanted to tell you that our city garden, our community garden, is producing. I've been eating arugula every single day, so hopefully I'll lose some weight. And if you haven't seen our beautiful city garden, our community garden, is really a special treat to go and take a look, and it's one of the things that I'm proudest of. In addition, we had Friday Fest on November 2nd, and that was a success. And then November 6th was Election Day, and that was a very interesting day. I also attended the New Rockledge Regional Hospitals event that they had, because they put up a new sign, "They are no longer Wusthoff, they are Stewart." That was interesting because they told about the history, that that area that we're Stewart Rockledge Regional Hospital stands on was at one time a golf course. So every time I go someplace, I learn something new. I had pictures with Congressman Posey once again. That was also interesting. On November 12th, I went to Space Coast, the Space Coast Board of Directors meeting at Dixie Crossroads, and Mayor Ruin spoke about the quality of water. Mayor Ruin is in charge of all the mayors for the 411 cities in the Florida League of Cities, and he is from Sanibel, and they have spent over $3 million just cleaning up dead fish this summer because of red tide. If anybody would like to look at the documents that he gave, he gave an excellent presentation. I could even send that to you digitally about the importance of water and the quality of water and what's being done at Lake O to help this whole situation out. That was excellent. And in addition, I went then to the general meeting, and at the general meeting, we had the new general speak from Patrick Air Force Base. He claims that we're going to have 48 launches for 2019, which is just amazing, amazing. Let's see, in addition, they're keeping me very busy, I just want you to know that. I went to the Florida League of Cities meeting in Lake Bonavista on the 14th and 15th, and on the 14th, I went to the meeting for the Board of Directors from all of the different leagues all over the state. That was for the Board of Directors and also the mayors, and that was an interesting meeting also. And if anybody ever wants to ask me any questions about anything in particular, I'd be glad to answer. The following day, at 9:00 AM, I went to the Transportation Policy Committee meeting, and that includes all projects and also includes information about affordable housing, driverless cars, motorized scooters, and dockless bikes. So I'm out learning a lot about a lot of things. That's about it, and it's been an interesting time. I've had a very interesting, rewarding, fulfilled year. Thank you very much. It is, has been a pleasure to serve the citizens of Cape Canaveral. After all, Cape Canaveral is my neighborhood. Oh, I have one more thing. Excuse me, I forgot.
We got a limerick or something?
Of course, we have a limerick. I mean, I won't come to City Hall without giving a poem or a limerick.
I take mine with me everywhere.
I'm ready. There once was a man named Dicky whom some thought was a bit picky. He worked very hard, always on his guard, for city affairs quite tricky.
That would, that would be, that wouldn't be Tricky Dicky next to me, would it? Is that who that was?
I would love to get a copy of that. That will go out with my Christmas cards this year.
Excuse me, sir, I'm ready. You may have it. I did not sign it.
You get a copy, I was last month, and you get a copy so people ask it for you on your street thinking, "She made up that." I said, "No, there it is, right there, with her name and card."
Thank you, Rock.
Mr. Randalls, you, I'm sure you got something you want to say.
I can't top that.
That would be, that would be in the event if you didn't.
But I touch on a couple of things. I have the privilege of serving on a few different committees throughout the community, and one of them is I'm the chair of the Local Coordinating Board for Transportation Disadvantaged Services, and that is the Space Coast Area Transit, and it takes quite a bit of time, but it's very, it's rewarding. You see, and I got some facts and figures here. We meet once every quarter and listen to all the concerns that people have about how to improve the system, and we try to put it in the county budget, the county pays for this, for the budget. We get some $8 million a year out of Department of Transportation, which is your gasoline tax that you pay on your gasoline purchases. We thank you for that. And, but in any event, I'll just touch on a couple of things. We have new schedules that come out there. Your little city is probably the best, well, it is the best example of that, because we have buses as early as 6:02 in the morning, because people use them to get to the, all the hotels for housekeeping, and we run every half hour until 11:13 at night for Cocoa Beach and Cape Canaveral. Many of our residents do not have cars and use that as a means, means of transportation. And since I have the figures, and Bob, as the mayor, you really broke all records. We've never had a meeting get done this soon. We usually get out- We usually get out at 10 o'clock, those usually want to stay.
We might tonight yet if you don't keep quiet. If you don't cut her short, we'd be here till 10.
I have applied for some new buses, written a grant with the help of Department of Transportation. And we just received four new 30-foot buses that will be in use. The difficult thing is, is we can get money for capital, thanks to your gasoline tax, but we can't get money from the county for operating expenses. So we've got new buses and routes to put them on, but no drivers. In the order that is already put away with for next year, we're scheduled to get two low-floor trolley buses. Years and years ago, we had the trolley buses. That was the first grant we got for $840,000. And, but they were wooden seats, they rattled, they shook, and we was kind of glad, those that ride, I'm kind of glad to get back to the soft seats. But these have soft seats. I just touch on a little bit about it here, since I got an off, an audience that probably don't need to know or want to know this, but I think it's kind of important. Over the last quarter, we only had 14 complaints of service. Now, bearing in mind, this is a transportation disadvantage. Now, I'll give you some numbers. We pick up all the people for kidney dialysis, directly with a van, take them there and bring them back. Take anybody that doesn't have transportation to medical needs. So idle all that, and a lot of it, only there was two complaint that we were late. So that speaks well for them. Got 58 combinations. These are people that really need a ride, whether it's to work. About 23 percent, I looked this up before I started talking, about 23 percent of the rides are for kidney dialysis, which is, you have to make two trips, because they may be there three to four hours. The other, about 21 percent of our fares is for medical appointments. And it goes way down listing, because when you fill out the application to get picked up, because they schedule a wound-here driver out to pick you up, and many of our residents have needed that. See, something is really of some value here. We've got 218 employees throughout the county. Bearing in mind, our county's 72 miles long. We go clear south to clear north. And some of the buses, and ours has two different shifts, because they work 24 hours a day. So that's kind of an accomplishment that is there. I will touch on another thing that was at the League of Cities, and I thought maybe it was the emissions, but it's the Indian River Citizen Oversight Committee. That's the committee that looks at the money as it's being spent, needs volunteers, and it's a monthly meeting, and it goes many hours, but they decide each and every amount. And those of us that may not know that we, as a League of Cities, all 16 municipalities, nominate people that are really interested in the oversight. And at this point, we've had, we have two great, two vacancies currently. And if somebody wants to donate the time to really get into the nitty-gritty of the Indian River Lagoon and how to spend the money, can have that. They've met 22 times in the past 24 months, so participation is significantly more demanding than most applicants have had interested. I think I may have one or two more that is, yes, standing in line at the post office. Ironically, you're, you mentioned about the peacocks, and it's on the back, I had to write on the back of an application for a thing. Taken from the resident in Harbor Heights, which is where all the peacocks are. And he says, "Peacocks are now having their third litter, or the third reproduction of baby peafowl this year, because it's a long, warm season," and those of you that probably noticed it. And he says, "When do we reach too many?" That's a very controversial subject. I don't know if the council's ever going to tackle it again, but people either love them or they hate them.
Fifty-fifty.
And, huh?
It's fifty-fifty.
It's about fifty-fifty. But, and, and just there, he, he brought it my attention, he had stopped a child coming down the street, hit, hit a peacock, or a peacock went through and got caught in the spokes and flipped his little bike over. He's about seven years old. And he was concerned about how many, and I said, "Well, that's probably something we really don't want to touch, because that's a no-win." But it is a problem, because there are, there are, there are waste products that's on porches, they're on top of your car, scratching those that don't have garages. There's a lot more of them than we have ever had. And I'll just pass out on it. The next lady, yes, sir. Maybe I can't ask, I'm not chairing the meeting. Wait till we get done, and you can tell us. Next was a lady in Ocean Woods that has feral cats that is being fed. That's a problem we've had for years and years and years, and the county ceased giving free food.
Fifty-fifty on that one, too. We've been through that one before, too.
Yeah, we've had that. But she says, you know, they're, short of being a nuisance, to her, they are a nuisance. But that's it. And residents put the food out there, and they're supposed to clean up, however they don't. She says, "Peacocks, squirrels, raccoons are eating remnants of the dry food." So I don't know if that's something we're ever going to tackle, but I don't know how many is too many. So with that in mind, I'll pass to the younger generation. Go.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to congratulate Mayor Hoag on your election outcome. I know you worked hard and look forward to serving another three years with you, and congratulations to you, Mayor Pro Tim Brown, as well. Arlen, thank you for serving. I know that kind of fell in the consent agenda on the Citizens Advisory Committee. And Ms. McPeak, thank you as well. Again, just want to echo that. And to all the candidates who ran, it was a big election, and I encourage anyone who's local to take a look. We have almost exclusively new faces elected here. If you're a resident in Cape Canaveral, and I'm not talking about governor seat, we have a new state senator, we have a new state representative, we have a new port commissioner, we have a new county commissioner. And reach out. Many of the issues that we try to tackle here are multifaceted, multi, you know, jurisdictional, and at different levels of government. So get to know them, reach out. They're, many of them are ready to go, new, and Cape Canaveral, in our attempts to be on the map, can use a lot of support from those folks. So congratulations to everyone who ran. And even if you did not win, I just want to recognize the courage for you to step out and to do that. It takes a lot to expose yourself at that capacity. The next thing I want to point out is we've got, this past month, gosh, it was a biddy one, busy one, the State of the Port at Port Canaveral was a presentation by the CEO, attended that media. It was a huge outcome, and the big takeaway there is the port is thriving in many capacities. Revenues are up, and Cape Canaveral must respond to the challenges, but also the opportunities that that's going to bring. So that was a very good presentation. I think that's public record. You can go watch that. It was video recorded. I encourage you to do that, too. Being a budding city, we have those issues that we need to tackle, which segues into the next announcement. I had an opportunity to attend the community outreach session. Thank you, Josh and Todd, for stepping up, and all the people who participated. A-1A was continued to be, as we are all well aware, and beating that drum through our resolutions every year, the more formal approach that we're taking to be the issue. We heard residents say that we need to do more and to step up, and just encourage you to please, again, those folks that are newly elected from state rep all the way down, A-1A is something that we all have alignment on, getting that speed limit lowered. Please reach out to those folks and, and let them know that we envision a bikeable, walkable city. And if you need the wording, Josh and our team worked really hard with a nice resolution. Maybe he can put that on the website and give you guys a link and make, make it easy for you to share that with those representatives, because squeaky wheel gets fixed, and it takes a lot of folks. A wise attendee said that sometimes local government's so busy, the only time we have time to fix anything is when we have fires. And that's certainly not the case for this city. I believe we get out front and preventative in many capacities. But this is certainly an issue with the deaths that we see every single year out there. So be safe, number one, and until it happens, we'll continue to fight hard there. But that was a segue, because with the ports growth, you hear about the new terminals, it's certainly going to bring more traffic challenges to this area. The next thing, Space Coast Area Transit. Rocky, thank you for your leadership on the public transportation there and continue to serve in that capacity. I got a chance to go on the ride with Jim, a little event, Space Coast Area Transit, and to learn how they're serving our community, some exciting things happening there, and really lowering those intervals for making it as easy as possible to, to get access to, from point A to point B within the city. I got a chance to sit down, and this is something I want to do on a more consistent basis moving forward, with Principal Jill Keen at Cape View Elementary. Had a wonderful conversation with her, met many of the staff, and reacquainted with those folks. And if you want to know what's going on with the community, you talk to your teachers. They'll, they'll let you know quickly how things are going. So I just want to thank Cape View for that. And then last month was Veterans Day. I want to thank all the veterans that serve our country every single day to, to allow us to have the freedoms and liberties that we all try to protect. And Cape View stepped up to the plate and did a wonderful presentation. A choir, the first graders got up and sang some of those American classic songs we all grew up singing, and many veterans, they did a free breakfast for all of them. It was just very well done, give you goosebumps. I think I recorded a few of them, things, I'll have to get those over to you, Josh. I got, you can set them up. It's pretty cool to see 400 kids all attending and singing together to celebrate many veterans from World War II all the way down. So thank you all for your service to this community. Continue to pass out the updates with the Lagoon for the Marine Resource Council. I'm trying to getting plugged in with those folks and trying to keep up with all the fast progress we're making here with the city. But there's, they've published a very easy, comprehensive report. I've got more of them. I've continued to drop them off at City Hall in the library. It's the Lagoon Update, and it's five metrics that you can quickly and easily understand. The data, the science and data's been out for a while, and they kind of packaged it in a way, and they're continuing to learn more and do more research on it, and it's a very comprehensive way to communicate, ranking five big data points that matter to help get our Lagoon back healthy again. So please take the time to pick those up. Those are free, and if we're out at this City Hall, I'll restore it. I know we got some more down at the library as well. Trunk or treat was a hit, as always. I mean, we're going to need a bigger parking lot, because it fills up fast, and they run a well-oiled machine there. I want to thank my mom and my mother-in-law for, who went above and beyond, as they always do, to decorate the car. We did take second place. I want to congratulate the winners and all the residents who came out and attended. It was a fun event, as always. We run out of candy too fast, but it continues to get better every year. So thank you all who attended and made that event a success and really a light in the community. The, and yes, with one year right here in front of us, it's been a pleasure to serve. I look forward to serving the next two years. Thanks, all the residents. And want to thank my wife and daughter, who are here tonight, and who always stood by my side through these city council meetings, I take very seriously, and the council here, it's an honor to serve with all of you and the staff who've, who've worked together along the way. So thank you all. And I had no idea that peacocks would get brought up tonight, but this looks like a turkey tie, but it's not a turkey tie, it is a peacock tie. So I am, if that is a sentiment on how I feel about peacocks, there you go. And yes, with that, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and thank you all for joining us tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that from now on, we start reports at this end, so.
So you got something to say, right?
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Hoag. I think the city has spoken about the direction they want to move in. First thing I'd like to say, the Space Coast, I concur with Mrs. McPeak. The Space Coast Art Festival is well-run, and it's nice to see the community out there and supporting it. And it gives, things like Cape View Elementary had an opportunity, the PTO, Parent Teacher Organization, was not, was able to make $500 by helping clean up the, the art festival. Also, like Morrison, Commissioner Morrison mentioned, Veterans Day breakfast on November 3rd was well-supported by the community. We sold over 200 breakfasts, and any veteran and his family was able to eat free. Movie in the Park, Movie in the Park on November 9th was well-attended, and it was a great movie for our youth. The movie Wonder centered on bullying, and Aaron from Leisure Services did an excellent job in coordinating the event. Our Cape View Little League team just completed a successful fall ball league. I want to thank the city for the excellent job that they did in maintaining the fields and supporting the league. Also, I want to thank all our first responders for all the work they did at trick-or-treating and keeping our most prized possessions safe. And while we are enjoying our Thanksgiving holiday, I want everyone to thank our servicemen who are away from their families during the holiday season, and our first responders who give so much during the holiday, holiday season also. And in closing, please be safe and drive carefully. I think Thanksgiving holiday is one of the most traveled holidays, and at this time, patience is a must. And that person that's getting that parking lot, stole that parking lot from you, just ignore them. When you're traveling down the road, just kick back and smell the roses. And everybody be safe. Thank you, and look forward to seeing you all at next meeting.
With some good advice. I don't have much to say after all that. I just, the only thing I did that, I guess, I went to the League of Cities, I go to my policy committee meeting all the time. It's, CRAs was our number-one priority legislation that we'll be presenting to the Board of Directors for the league. That's a very important issue, and it's going to be a very important issue from here on with the, the new commission, I'm thinking. And I've already talked to some of them people, and we're kind of sitting on the fence with them. But that's an important issue in my book. And one other thing I did do is I was at the commissioning of the Indiana, we hosted it, the city of Cape Canaveral was the host, I was one of their main people, and I got to meet very, very large number of people that were really nice. The commander of the submarine turned out, lived right down the street from me, and I didn't even know that. He was staying at a B and B down there. But it was a nice event, well-attended, some, probably estimated 7,000 people were there. Other than that, it's, I've been following what they're saying, and I, I don't want to repeat everything they said. I'd just like to wish everybody a nice, happy Thanksgiving, and staff, I'd like to congratulate staff for all the wonderful work they do, and Josh, and all, John, Todd, Jeff, you're all here. And of course, our green people and our, our guy with the red, red fire truck over there, he don't. You all want to say anything? Commander, did you have anything you need to note? It's holiday, and then it's going to be staff's turn. Yeah.
Just to cover what we talked about last meeting, both the Fire Department and the Sheriff's Office tomorrow will be delivering numerous meals to those that have been in need in our community for Thanksgiving, so that they can have a wonderful time at home with their family, and also anyone that knows a family in need for the Christmas holiday that might need just a little extra support. Just be sure that you contact the Sheriff's Office. Again, Canaveral Fire Rescue and the Sheriff's Office partner for that, and we provide that extra support that we need for our community members, both young and old, doesn't matter age, so that we can give them that little bit that they need to make it through the end of the year. And no drinking and driving, please get a designated driver for the holidays.
You have a good holiday, too. Be safe. Thank you, Commander.
Yeah, I have one announcement, but first I'd like to start with a quick joke. I was always taught when speaking, just throw a joke in there, and it always really helps. What is orange and sounds like a parrot?
For what?
Parrot. What is orange and sounds like a parrot?
Carrot.
Very good. Wes, you're great. You're the only person I've ever given that, told that joke to that's got, you're out-of-the-box thinker. That's excellent. Anyways, I want to announce on November 29th, at 6:00 p.m., at our public library, we're going to be having a resiliency workshop. And what that means is the city is looking at itself to become more resilient, to harden the city with respect to sea level rise. It's an important issue, and it's an issue that we need to start thinking about now. So we've entered into an agreement with the East Central So we've entered into an agreement with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, and they're coming in, they're going to put on a workshop, and we're going to be, really it's an opportunity for the residents to get involved in this process. So please mark that on your calendar, November 29th at 6:00 PM at the library. I'd encourage everybody to come out, because the more people we have involved, it's, my experience is, the stronger, more robust end product we'll have. So please, for me. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Legal, method? Okay. Anybody in the... Yes, I was just going to ask, I was just going to ask, is there anybody in the audience that would like to address? Please come to the podium, sir, and give your name, please.
My name is Gil Livingston. I live in Ocean Woods. I just want to make one comment on the peacocks. I'm a seasonal owner. I live in Michigan in the summer on a lake, and we have a similar problem with Canadian geese. And the solution, interestingly enough, and it was controversial, was we had people come in every spring, find the nest, and leave only one egg left in the nest. So that basically managed the population size without having a controversy over being mean to them, or killing them, or something like that. And I know they lay big eggs, and they're just kind of laying around, so that's something you may want, if you get bring that topic up again, you may want to consider as a, maybe an acceptable solution to manage the herd size. Just wanted to bring that up.
Where I used to work at the university in St. Louis, the maintenance staff would give them grape Kool-Aid. We had Canadian geese, and I don't know if you know what the grape Kool-Aid does, it just blows them up.
Oh. That's cruel.
Yeah, that is cruel. No, not the eggs, the geese.
Well, I heard of people giving pigeons birth control in their water once, so I don't know if that worked or not, so.
We've tried many things in the past, and it's a 50/50 fight.
I know, I know. We have a lot of...
Anybody else? Anybody? Meeting adjourned.